All right. Good evening, everyone, and I wanted to welcome you to the Greenbelt resident city council candidate forum. And we are excited to have our 10 or possibly nine candidates this evening who are pursuing a role on our city council. And will be representing us in the business of what we do in Greenbelt. This is an opportunity for you to learn about the candidates, what they believe in, their approaches, their experience, and their hopes for the city. We all know that we live in a beautiful city of more than 23,000 people, arranging from children, families, to seniors, to immigrants, and every one in between. So I want to encourage you to listen with an open mind to what they have to say. This evening, we will go through six questions that came from you as residents. We received well over 20 questions from residents on a wide range of topics. Of course, in the time that we have, we cannot cover the full breadth of the questions that we receive, but we will do our best to cover the topics that seem to be most important to our residents. But this is just the one opportunity. I want to encourage you, if a question wasn't answered this evening, to follow up with the candidates, to ask them what they they think and their thoughts on what's important to you. Because your vote is vital. We all know, and we encourage everyone to participate in national and presidential elections. But we all know that city and municipal elections are just as vitally important to us as residents. So each of the candidates have been briefed on the the format for this evening. We will start out with an introduction from each candidate, then move to the six questions, and we will have closing remarks from everyone. Again, I want to thank you for joining us this evening. I will pass things off to Mr. David Zarin.
Thank you, Dina, and welcome, everyone, to this wonderful forum here. You know, a lot of you probably know these candidates. You probably run into them at the co-op, or maybe saw them in the Labor Day parade. Maybe they're your neighbors. Maybe you read the news review last week, when each of the candidates was presented with three questions, and they held forth on each one of those. We have six different questions here tonight, but this is your chance to find out even more about these people that want to represent you, as Dina said, on the council for the next couple of years. The questions that we have here will be presented to each candidate. They will each get the same six questions. We'll go in a order that will show you first the order of the ballot, the way they are listed on the ballot. They will introduce themselves. They'll have one minute apiece, and then for each of the questions, we'll give them a minute and a half, 90 seconds, and there is a clock on your screen there, and I will do my best. I don't have a buzzer. I will not be giving you a 10 or a five second warning. I'll let you take your full 90 seconds, and keep in mind that the clock only starts after I have finished asking the question. And I will be happy to repeat the question. I'll do that as a matter of course, as we go through here. All right, so if we are ready, let's get this forum started here, and welcome all nine. We have nine of our candidates here tonight, and the first candidate that you're about to meet is Brandon Rick Gordon. Mr. Gordon, welcome to the program, and would you start us out? You get to go first. Tell us about yourself and why you want to be on the council.
Thank you so much. Famous Brandon Rick Gordon. I'm a community activist that resides in the Franklin Park community. I am already about the people's business, already working for you, the residents of Greenbelt. I serve on various boards and committees, gate being one of them, also crab, as well as the GFC, to name a few. I also sponsor various rallies that have dealt with common ground building here in our city, be it through things are asked, community activism, and through stopping the ballot, and voter registration, and census awareness. As I go out through our city, I hear people ask, who can I send? I ask you, Greenbelt, send me. Send me to stand for you. Send me to represent you. Send me to advocate for you. I ask for you to send me. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. And next candidate is Rodney Roberts. Mr. Roberts, it's time for you to do your one minute commercial. Tell us about yourself, please. Make sure you're unmuted there, so we can hear you. Is Mr. Roberts with us? There he is. Rodney, we can see your lips move, but we can't hear what you're saying.
About now.
One more time. Give me a sound check.
Good.
Sounds good. All right, so let me give you. Mr. Roberts, tell us about yourself, please.
I'm Rodney Roberts. I grew up here in Greenbelt. I'm 63 years old. I've given 35 years out of my 63 years, trying to make sure that people that come after me get to enjoy the really good things about Greenbelt. A lot of them are, you know, the forest, or open space, or affordability, or friendliness, all the things that really set Greenbelt out from all the other places around us. I think Greenbelt is a special place, and I want to do everything I can to keep it a special place. So thank you, and I look forward to the questions tonight.
Welcome to the program. Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Our next candidate is Judith Davis, Jay Davis. Ms. Davis, welcome to the program. Tell us, tell us why you want to be on the council.
Well, first of all, I'm Jay Davis. Most people know me by that name. I'm number four on the ballot. I moved to Greenbelt in 1975, first renting and then buying my condominium apartment in Greenbrier in Greenbelt East. I'm a retired educator. I was the chair of the advisory planning board and the carnival chair for the Labor Day festival for many years before being elected to council. During my tenure on council, I was mayor for 16 years, the longest consecutively serving Greenbelt mayor, and the third woman in that position. Many changes have occurred in Greenbelt during my 14 terms as council member. More development, increased and more diverse population, expanded city services, a forest preserve, as well as many challenges, especially in the past year and a half. And one thing that doesn't change, however, council's purpose is to serve our residents, and I firmly hold that belief and hope that you give me your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay, and you indeed are fourth on the ballot. Mr. Zajak, who is not able to be with us this evening, is number three. So the fifth person on the ballot, and the fifth introduction we'll get this evening, is from Mr. Matthew Inzio. Mr. Inzio, welcome to the show.
Thank you, sir, for having me. Real quick, my name is Matthew Inzio. I moved to Greenbelt at eight years old in my family. One thing special about me is I feel like I am the candidate for the future. And people actually, why is that? It's because I can represent four different generations of Greenbelters. To the to the young child as eight years old when I lived here, to a teenager in Greenbelt, also to a young adult in Greenbelt, and currently as a father and a husband and a father of four, also living in Greenbelt. So I understand the good, the bad, and the struggle of Greenbelt. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Inzio. Next on the ballot, and our next introduction comes from Colin Byrd. Mr. Byrd, welcome to the show. Tell us about yourself, please, and why you want to be on the council.
Thank you, Mr. Dave, and thank you to everyone for having me. You know, in this election, which is an important election, there are candidates with a great deal of experience. There are some candidates who are lifelong Greenbelters, and there are some candidates with a lot of youth energy and fresh ideas. I think I bring the best of all three of those worlds as a lifelong Greenbelter, as somebody who is.
Janaya, come here, please.
And as somebody who has served as a city council member and as mayor for the past two years. But more than that, I'm also somebody who has collaborated closely with my colleagues on a number of issues, from public safety to issues as varied as issues impacting Greenbelt West, like building the trail for Greenbelt Station, the new community, working closely with stakeholders at the state level on issues like that. And so I humbly ask that on November 2nd, you vote Byrd, your voice will be heard.
Thank you, Mr. Byrd. We move next to Silky Pope. Ms. Pope, you have one minute. Please tell us about yourself and why you want to be on the council.
Thank you so much for having us tonight. I really appreciate that you give us the opportunity to have this forum tonight. So my name is Silky Pope, and I have lived in Greenbelt since 1998, 23 years, the longest I've lived in one place ever. My husband, my family moved here from Germany after my husband retired from the US military, and we needed to relocate to this area for a job opportunity. We lived in Spring Hill Lake first for about four years, and my daughter started her first grade in Spring Hill Lake Elementary, actually. We then decided to stay in this great city and make this our home. I became a naturalized citizen of this wonderful country in 2006. I have been working for Greenbelt Middle School and Spring Hill Lake Elementary School for 21 years. We are residing in Bell Point in a community here in Greenbelt, right behind American Legion. I have two rescue dogs and five grandchildren, and yes, I've served on many, many on many, many boards as well.
Thank you very much. All right, we move to the next person on the ballot and our next council candidate, Mr. William Orleans. Mr. Orleans, I know you're having some difficulty with your wifi. Are you still with us?
I'm with you.
Good, all right. Would you take a minute and tell us about yourself, please, and why you want to be on the council?
Good evening, all. I returned to Greenbelt in 2004, and after a short period of medical recovery, started attending council meetings, something I had done only sporadically when I was living in New York. Meetings were mostly during the day. For most of that time until this time, very few people, residents of Greenbelt, attended council meetings. Thankfully, that has improved somewhat more recently. It did not take me very long to think of council as more than just an amusement. induced anger in me. So then, as it has continued to do, talks too much and listens not enough. Apart from any one policy or any one or more policy decisions council has made, they have a disdain for residents of Greenbelt. And it's for that reason that I first decided to run to be a candidate in 2007. And when.
Thank you very much. I'll be able to come back to you in just a few moments, and maybe you can finish some of those thoughts in answering one of the other questions here. Thank you, sir, very much. Let's move on to Emmett Jordan. Mr. Jordan, welcome to the show tonight, and would you make your one minute, please, sir?
Good evening, Dave. My name's Emmett Jordan, and I'm running for reelection to the Greenbelt City Council. I've served on council since 2009. I'm currently serving as mayor pro temp after three terms as mayor. And let's see, I've lived in Greenbelt for about 22 years. I relocated here to work with the University of Maryland back in 1998, and moved here to Greenbrier Condominiums. It's a great location and so many amenities in the city of Greenbelt. 2009, I became the first African American elected to serve on the city council in Greenbelt. I'm a native of Cincinnati, Ohio, and studied liberal arts and music at Morehouse College and at the University of Cincinnati, where I ultimately received a bachelor's of science degree in urban administration. I attend a lot of workshops and conferences to make sure that I'm up on the latest information from municipalities. I serve on a number of committees, including the Metropolitan Washington Council of Government's Transportation Planning Board and the National League of Cities First Tier Suburbs Council, but actually chair. I've worked with a lot of organizations, including the Smithsonian Institution, the University of Maryland, United Eagle College Fund, but I've been working as an independent contractor for the past.
Mr. Jordan, can we? Here's some more of that in some of your subsequent answers there, so we keep everyone to just one minute. And the last of the candidates, last and certainly not least here, again, we are going by ballot order. The last person on the ballot is Kristen Weaver. And Kristen, Ms. Weaver, welcome to the show. Tell us about yourself, why you want to be on the Greenbelt City Council.
Yeah, so my name is Kristen Weaver. I moved to Greenbelt in 2015. I live in Greenbelt Station in Greenbelt West, and we moved to this neighborhood because of the proximity to the metro. But even though it's a new neighborhood, one of the things I love about being part of a community like Greenbelt that has such a history is you have the new and the old, and all of the wonderful things about Greenbelt, as well as the, you know, the modern things like the neighborhood that I live in. And when I moved, one of the things that was really important to me was to help develop a sense of community within my neighborhood, but then also trying to get more involved in things in Greenbelt. So I was one of the original members of the of the activities committee, and then I've sought other opportunities to to sit on the park and recreation advisory board, the connecting across Greenbelt group, composting, all of these things that it's just really important to me to be active in the community, and I see council as kind of the next step of being more active, and I hope you'll help me, help me get there on November 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you all for adhering to the to the one minute there for your introductions. And let's move on now to the first of our six questions, and we will be going in the same order, the ballot order for this first question. So, Mr. Gordon, you'll be first up, and our first question tonight. You know, even among Greenbelt advocates like yourselves, differences of opinion are inevitable and even expected. But the challenge is always how to disagree without being disagreeable. So let's start by asking each of you what you'll do to make the next council a cohesive, collaborative, and productive body. Mr. Gordon.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Aaron. I think the answer isn't that is not that trivial. Common ground, I believe, was the answer for all, because we have to learn to work together as one. Because it's not about us, it's not about people in council. Yes, we work for our residents, but ultimately it's about the residents and working for them. So what I want to do, I want to interject in a way that we can make sure our council meetings are done in decency and in order, to make sure that we are meeting within a decent time and not fatiguing our residents out during the wee hours of the night. That's what I want to interject into council, where we have pre-meetings before our council meetings, and we start to talk with each other, having team-building exercises to help build unity amongst council, to go beyond the four walls of the council chambers, to build that unity. Because if we're unified, then we can work better for our residents. If we're unified, our residents can see us as an example on how to be productive Greenborders, because it begins at the top, and then work its way down. So the residents, our children, are looking at us and what we do as an example. So I believe that we can do these things, we can make them happen. We have to stand on that common ground, unite together, and that's there by those things, by learning to work with each other, talk with each other, having those building exercises to find that way to get things done for Greenborders, and not just for ourselves, not for ambitions, but for Greenbelt. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gordon. And just to remind all of our viewers, each of our candidates will have 90 seconds to answer all of our questions here. Mr. Gordon answered exactly on 90 seconds, so we appreciate that. We move next to Mr. Roberts. You heard his introduction a few moments ago, and Mr. Roberts, let me just reiterate. We're asking you and all of your council candidates to tell us what you'll do to make the next council a cohesive and productive and collaborative group. Your thoughts, please.
Well, my philosophy is to leave politics out of the city council. When I, you know, my philosophy is that I vote on various issues depending on, you know, what I hear in the community from my, from the people in the community, and what I think is ultimately what I think is the best thing for our city. And that's how I vote. And then I allow the citizens to decide, you know, whether they want to reelect me at the end of the two-year term, because, and that's what I do. You know, if if I take a vote and people don't like it, and they want to vote me off the council for that, that's their prerogative, but I'm not going to change my votes depending on, you know, how many votes I might get or I might not get. I think that's one of our big problems right now, is we have too much politics in the city council. We need to be, you know, leaving that behind and doing what we think is right for the community, and then allowing the citizens to decide if they agree with us or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. We appreciate that. Let's move on now to Jay Davis. Ms. Davis, again, what you will do on council to make it more productive and cohesive in the new term?
Thank you. That indeed has been a problem during the past two years, and it's been very noticed by our residents. How the council behaves and reacts with each other depends primarily on how the meetings are led and organized. We have standing rules, and they need to be followed, enforced, and reinforced if necessary. Periods of discussion can be controlled without limiting full participation by members of council and by our residents. Leadership is key, along with a cooperative, collaborative council. All of us are responsible for how the meeting goes on. To regain this collegiality and civility, the new council needs to meet, not in Ocean City or anywhere special, but in a retreat and in that atmosphere soon after the election to review the standing rules and propose ways to improve the meetings. There is, there is a way to do this, and we have done this in the past. Very often, we do have disagreements, but we don't need to get off track. We need to stick to the business of the city and to the residents, and then uphold our own principles of civility while we are doing this. Thank you.
Thank you for your suggestions, Ms. Davis. We move next to Mr. Inzio. Mr. Inzio, welcome back. And again, we're responding to a question about the decorum on the board, how you can make the next council a more productive and cohesive group, sir? Please unmute yourself. I think you might have muted yourself there.
Sorry, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you.
We'll start your clock. Okay, you've got your 90 seconds. Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. I think the most important thing is teamwork, and what I've done already is starting conversations with with the council already. And I think that I totally agree that a lot of the rules have been broken in the past, and and I also value that I think rules are important, I think rules should be followed, referenced to council. And I think that the value is, is I think I'm an excellent listener, and I value that because when I speak, I think that it's important to speak when you have something extremely valued to say. So I'm not with the bickering, I'm not with the back and forth. I want to make sure that when I say something in council, it's important, it's meaningful, and it's direct, and it helps the city of Greenbelt. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We appreciate those suggestions, as do all the voters out there who are listening to all of these responses here. We now go back to Mr. Byrd. Mr. Byrd, next council, a more cohesive, a more productive body. Any suggestions?
Thank you for the question. You know, for me, when I first ran for office, I said, vote Byrd, your voice will be heard. What that means is that the people always come first. The people always come first. The people always come first. Now, why do I say that in the context of this question? This is an important question, right? There has definitely been tension on council over the past two years, and I would note it is not necessarily new. We've seen, you know, tension on council for years on different issues between different council members. But what I'm even more concerned about is the tension between the people, the needs of the people, and the decisions that are made by the city council. It is incredibly important that we find that common ground, as was alluded to earlier, but that that common ground not just be between us, but between us and the people that we represent. That is something that I think, given that there will be some, at least at least some new council members, we will be able to work toward, and I've tried my best to make sure that there's synchrony between myself and the people, and to the extent that that extends to the rest of council, I think we will get to a point where there is less tension. We do need to have team-building exercises. I've held more town halls than any council member in city history, and so again, bridging the gaps that exist between the positions, views, and policies espoused by our council and those desired by the people will be critical.
Thank you very much, sir, for sharing your thoughts with us. We move now to Ms. Pope. Ms. Pope, again, your thoughts on making this next council a more productive body?
Thank you for your question. Um, we definitely need to improve the personal and professional etiquette of our meetings. And as well as our current late-night council meetings, they are just unacceptable, and those long, long-running meeting times, they hinder citizens' involvement and are just not respectful of anyone's time. I think we need to have clear and manageable meeting agendas that contain a reasonable number of topics and time limits. As it was said before, we need to find that, we need to stick to our meeting rules, you know, and not ignore them and just following them when they are convenient. But I really think we should adhere to our council standing goals, as well as Robert's rule of order. I'm, for one, always willing to work with all of council members present and new ones, and hopefully I'm going to be reelected, and I'll have the chance to work with with our new council members who are going to be elected, because we have these two free seats, possibly more. But I really think that we need to show a united front. We are leaders of our city and our residents. We work for our residents, and they look up to us, and they see these disagreements. And how would it, and I think, how would it make me feel? Well, it wouldn't make me feel very confident, so we definitely have to make some changes. We have to sit together, and we are, we have to be all willing to collaborate and work together. Together, we can go far.
Thank you so much, Ms. Pope, and thank you and all of the candidates for adhering to the 90-second limit here for each of these questions. We move now to Mr. Orleans. Mr. Orleans, I know you had some problems with your wifi before. Are you back up and running? Make sure you unmute yourself, sir.
I'm with you at the moment, and I think I'm unmuted.
Wonderful. So the question at hand here is your ideas on making the next council a more cohesive and productive body?
I'm all for productivity, and I'm also all for cohesion on council. I'm also all for civility. I think we have a misunderstanding in Greenbelt and among candidates and among residents that all argumentation is necessarily a bad thing. I don't agree that argumentation is necessarily a bad thing. Sometimes, in fact, I believe most often, the best consensus can be arrived at after a contentious discussion. So I'm not opposed to members of council and members of the public when they're permitted to participate in contesting one another on a public, given public policy question. What hinders council, what causes meetings to run late, and what causes the tension that we're all opposed to is when council members choose to be defensive when something is said about them or their position. That needs to stop. With the old council or with the new council, members of council should say what they have to say and let it go.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate all those suggestions that you've offered to us. Let's go now to Mr. Jordan. And again, productivity, cohesiveness, collaboration, all good words. How do we make all of them come true in the new council?
Well, thank you, thank you. You know, I think some of the tension on council is really reflective of the tension and divisiveness that we see all across the country right now. So, and I think that plays out in Greenbelt in different ways. You know, sometimes I think council takes itself too seriously. You know, we're all neighbors first, and we just need to lighten up sometimes and work as a team. You know, it's really not about me or about us, it's about taking care of the business of the city. So as far as the mechanics of how we work, I think we need to have better time management of the meetings. We really do need to stick to the the rules that we've all agreed to in terms of the cycle of when, how often people speak, and how long people speak. So that that would help quite a bit. Couple of suggestions, I think that, you know, some sections of the agenda, for instance, petitions and requests. I'm really beginning to think that we could actually record those ahead of time, maybe air them between 7:30 and 8:00, because too often that section of the agenda turns into a back-and-forth, questions and answers, and that's not what it's supposed to be. So, you know, I think civility is very, very important. I think the team-building and retreats and working together, you know, we have to place more of an emphasis on it. But yeah, in general, I think we need to lighten up a little bit.
Thank you so much, Mr. Jordan. And the last speaker in this first question about the council and how it might improve the decorum there goes to Ms. Weaver. Ms. Weaver.
Thank you. So I think that all of city council could benefit.
Thank you. So I think that all of city council could benefit from training and how to lead effective productive meetings. There are organizations that provide resources for that, including the Center for Dynamic Community Governments, which has even received grant funding from the city in the past. And then the, the question we were sent asked for a specific example. So I have one of those of a, of a time, I think recently, that the process could have improved and it has to do with the, the recent discussion of police reform. There was the initial, the proposal put forward by Mayor, Mayor Bird and then responded to by the Public Safety Advisory Board and the, and Chief Bowers. And then several work sessions worth of discussion. But I think the most recent work session could have been used more effectively to determine which points of that proposal there was general agreement on, which I think there were many, and which were going to be sticking points. And that might have meant going through line by line as needed for those issues that were causing concerns either to council members or the police department and find compromises. But I think if that had been done in an organized way and gone through that, that motion step by step, a motion that had enough votes to be passed in council could have been ready for the next regular meeting, rather than it being pushed off again, which is what happened. And my initial position on that, that police reform package was that it didn't seem necessary to duplicate regulations which were included in the new state like legislation going into effect next year. But I think listening to some of the thoughtful comments during that session, I'm now pretty convinced that it is an important message for us to send with that, that, with our process. However, that message is lost if it takes months longer to actually pass something.
Thank you very much, Ms. Weaver, and that concludes the answers to our first question. We'll be moving on to the second question now. And Mr. Gordon, you'll be happy to know that you are not first again. Maybe you did like being first. We're going to change the order, jump up just a little bit. So you all can, yeah, we're going to play musical chairs here a bit. Again, you have 90 seconds and let's move on now to the environment. You know, none of us can escape what's been happening to our planet. Climates are changing, the globe is warming, species are shape shifting and as they try to avoid extinction. You know, Greenbelt, and we're all proud of Greenbelt, is already consciously green. But candidates, what specific actions would you take to further reduce our town's carbon footprint? Reducing our town's carbon footprint. And we're going to start with Mr. Roberts this time. Mr. Roberts, can you share your thoughts with us, please?
We're not. Okay, can you hear me now?
Still?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out this laptop. I'm lost today.
I, I understand your problems. Yes, go ahead.
Well, can you give me the question again?
I sure can. What specific actions would you take to further reduce Greenbelt's carbon footprint? This is a question about the environment.
Yeah, I think that's an important question. And for one thing, we have to protect all of the trees that we have in our forests. And we need to increase the amount of trees that we have. And that makes a big difference because I think that that's why we have a livable planet in the first place. Is because of plants that know how to photosynthesize. And then we also have to reduce our use, especially the use of the automobile. I've been fighting this for years and years. I served for 28 years on the transportation planning board. And I have always been fighting and fighting against the proposals to have new highways around us, through us. You know, you name it. And if we continue down the road of highways and, and driving more and more cars, regardless of what kind of cars it is, even if we all had an electric car, the fact that we had to make millions and millions of cars every year, that's not going to save our planet. So we need to use, have less cars on the highway. And I think the pandemic kind of helped us with that. But it seems like we're going back, you know, a lot of people going back to work instead of working at home. So I think we, there really needs to be concerted effort to have more people stay at home and work. Because I think we, we learned through the pandemic that that is a viable solution. People can, a lot of people can work at home and I think that would make a huge amount of difference.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much for that answer. Let's move on to Ms. Davis. Tell us about the carbon footprint. How can we reduce it here in Greenbelt?
Well, first of all, Greenbelt is to be commended for all of the policies and events and activities that we already do. As a city, and especially with our public works and our recycling department, we have achieved the Sustainable Certified Maryland at least three times now. The last time with over 600 points, which is the most points any city has ever achieved. So there are many things that we, we still can do and improve. Yes, we need to increase the electric number of electric vehicles in our fleet. And we need to also make sure that there are more electric vehicle charges throughout the city. We need to look at what we are recycling. We already do quite a bit, but we can also promote it better. A lot of folks just don't know what to recycle. And you had to kind of reinforce it and do it over and over again. And we find new ways to recycle. There are many wooded parcels still in existence throughout Greenbelt. We've already added another parcel to the forest preserve over in Greenbelt East. But we need some other forest, forest preserve parcels as well, especially perhaps over in Greenbelt West. Though they have a whole state preserve over there that really is wonderful. So a lot of the other things we do need to look at are the gaps in our street trees. And then lead, keep putting more street trees in, especially in Greenbelt West. And make sure that they are trees that will be able to survive in our changing climate.
Thank you very much, Ms. Davis, for those suggestions. We move now to Mr. Bird. And your thoughts on reducing the carbon footprint here in town?
Well, let's start with a couple of fun facts. First of all, the first job I ever had was with Environment Maryland. So from day one, I've been about this. Number two, I sit on the Prince George's County Climate Action Commission. Number three, I'm the council liaison to Greenaces. And then number four, my campaign is endorsed by the city's foremost climate activist, and that is Laura Rosenthal. But what do we want to do on this issue? Well, one of the things that has already happened over the past two years, and Councilmember Davis alluded to it, is we are now, you know, before I came to the office, this wasn't the case. But we are now number one in all of Maryland when it comes to sustainable Maryland certification. That's number one. Number two, we passed a, a resolution that I put forward related to declaring a climate emergency in Greenbelt. And number three, I believe that going forward, we must absolutely deal with this fact that we need to stop investing in fossil fuel vehicles and begin the transition in a meaningful and, and with teeth way to vehicle purchases, whether it's tiered from all electric and then plug-in hybrid, then standard, standard hybrid. But we have to move away from internal combustion and expanding our composting is going to be also critically important. I think we have to set in place very strong ambitious climate reduction goals as part of our sustainability framework, which needs to be updated.
Thank you, Mr. Bird. We appreciate your comments. Let's move on now to Mr. Orleans. Mr. Orleans, reducing the carbon footprint here in Greenbelt. Your ideas, sir? Mr. Orleans, are you still with us?
Oh, I'm with you. I apologize.
That's all right. Just make sure you let us see your, your video. Think you might be blocking your video.
I thought that may actually have been part of the problem, but there's my pretty face.
There you go. All right.
In addition, in addition to the council recognizing its responsibility to, when making a purchase of vehicles, to procure more vehicles that are not of the infernal combustion variety. And that would be equipment as well. And in addition to hopefully, hoping not to see more of our forests and our Greenbelt woods removed. One important thing the city of Greenbelt could take the lead in is in mobilizing the municipalities in the PGCMA and mobilizing the municipalities in the Maryland Municipal League to do more countywide and statewide. The procurement cooperative purchase agreement that Greenbelt falls within is very often something that's negotiated at a, at a much higher jurisdictional level. To support candidates countywide and statewide, that will demonstrate a commitment to reducing our carbon footprint. There's more that we can do. This council needs to be sincere. And the next council needs to be sincere in their pursuit of a lesser carbon footprint.
Thank you for sharing those thoughts with us, sir. Let's move on now to Ms. Weaver.
Yeah, thank you. I think this is a really important issue and I, I agree that the city has, has done many things that we need to keep doing, such as trying to install more solar panels on city buildings or other city possible property where that might be feasible. And, and I think whenever renovations or new construction is taking place on city property, we need to make sure that we're, we're building energy efficient buildings. I think, I agree, we should also make sure we're only buying electric vehicles for the city fleet unless there truly are no other viable options. I've also been recently learning a lot more about the push to make new construction all electric, mostly residential construction, meaning no gas for heating or cooking. I think that's something we should advocate for whenever possible. Because that has implications for not only the carbon footprint, but also indoor air quality and other health issues. I think diverting food scraps from the landfill for composting is a way to reduce emissions of methane, which is a more potent greenhouse gas than carbon dioxide. And I've been personally involved with the community composting initiative supported by the city at, at Spring Hill Lake Recreation Center. And was really pleased when the compost drop off was added at Buddy Attic Park. But I think there is more that we can be, do to encourage composting of food scraps. Certainly continuing to promote individual composting or neighborhood projects like the one at Spring Hill Lake. But also even maybe look at a pickup system alongside trash and recycling, including in apartment complexes where people don't have a yard to compost themselves, even if they wanted to. So I think also beyond reducing our carbon footprint, we also need to be proactive in our city policies to prepare for the impacts of climate change that we are not going to be able to avoid.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver. Mr. Gordon, you've heard your other candidates talking about reducing the carbon footprint. Your ideas, sir?
Yes, sir. So with that being said, there are so many great ideas not coming in. Our city, our city council, we're taking steps in order to climb, the combat climate change and other things. But I will say that, you know, again, it's not very trivial. Sometimes we have to look at, we need to train. Because sometimes, most time, it's, you know, most folks don't understand why the need to recycle, the need to compost. And I would want to work with the city council in order that we could work with our different apartment owners and property management owners to make sure that, I know, for example, I live in Franklin Park and there is no recycling there. The overflow of trash shows that you do not have that there. So by working with the council to make sure these property managers have recycling in place and they're throughout the city, also using the certified dynamic governance and other entities like that to help train. And we could also have different trainings as far as the complexes throughout different areas of the city, different homes. So people can know and understand the importance. Most times the fact of people don't know why. You know, I see all these great things. You're putting these great things up, electric cars, all this stuff is great, but why? So I think we need to educate. I think education is the biggest part of it. Because once you educate the masses as the importance, you will see behavior change. Then once you see behavior change, then you will see our carbon footprint begin to change as well. There's a old saying, the day we cease to change is the day we cease to grow. And the day we cease to grow is the day we begin to fall. So we need to change our motive thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. We appreciate you sharing those suggestions with us. We now move to Mr. Inzio. Mr. Inzio, your thoughts on carbon footprint reduction?
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Yes, my plan is also really just to be a good teammate, to be, to work well with council in reference to pushing this further. The things that I would like to do was one, to, to set up a plan to build, to, to, to plant more trees. I think that's very valuable and very, very important. Another thing is to try to encourage other options than just driving. I think that we should invest more, more money in, in better coming up with a biking lane and encourage biking, encourage walking and encourage public transportation. And, and I think that's very valuable. I think I would definitely be encouraged moving into all electric and all hybrid vehicles. Another thing that I've seen is, is that people are putting charging dockets in front of their, in front of their houses. And I think that we should encourage that and we should promote that. Also for future developments with the apartments, I think we should encourage also solar panels and really look into environmental from the options. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your ideas, Mr. Inzio. We have two candidates left. Next is Ms. Pope. Ms. Pope, share your ideas, please, on reducing Greenbelt's carbon footprint.
Thank you. Our goal should always be reducing energy consumption and increasing the use of sustainable products throughout our city. The city is already nationally recognized as a Maryland certified sustainable city. We must maintain and improve on this accomplishment. We have multiple charging stations for electric vehicles and have recently added a bike share program. The city has electric and hybrid vehicles and is buying wind generated electricity. We must continue to maintain all these accomplishments and to pursue new ways to increase all of these efforts. I would like to replace gas powered vehicles with electric or hybrid vehicles whenever feasible. All lighting should be converted to LED wherever possible. Even using smart power strips in our offices can make a difference and help conserve energy. I would love to see a city owned solar farm to generate power for the city if we could solve the problem of where to locate it. I always support public transportation, except the Magloth train, as much as possible in whatever form that may take. As a city, we must constantly be aware of new developments and more affordable technology, inner technologies, energy conservation methods and sustainability. The city has made a lot of progress and we are known to be a forward thinking city. Let's keep it that way. I also oppose the widening of the DC Beltway. The widening is being proposed as a solution to alleviate traffic. But it's just a pretext to allowing high density residential and commercial development to pursue in our region. Once high density development has been achieved, the traffic on the widened Beltway will be right back where we started.
Thank you, Ms. Pope. Mr. Jordan, the last word.
Thank you, thank you. So, you know, lots of work to improve the city's carbon footprint that, you know, we've been, the city has been a leader in that area. Lots of work has been done. So, you know, the credit needs to go to our citizen activists and to councils over past years. We have done quite a bit, need to do more. And we've done a lot to improve the efficiency of our buildings through the grants and investments. But we need to move ahead with more solar panels on buildings. It would be nice to actually participate in or to have our own solar farm to offset some of our electricity use. I, I think the city can actually do more to, to work directly with our homeowners associations and condo associations and the cooperative and apartment management companies. I think a lot of people would, more people might really compost. You know, if they had detailed instructions, better instructions like postings in, in trash rooms and in some of our common buildings. That would help a lot flyers and I'm hoping that staff can kind of do a little bit more of that. I think, I think we could do more of that. Around transportation, I think that's a big piece of this formula. And, you know, a city circulator bus is something that we've talked about, something that I've advocated for, for a long time. But, you know, during the pandemic, you see a lot more people walking and biking. You know, I think, you know, first step is for us all to take personal responsibility for our carbon footprints. And I think I may have one of the lowest carbon footprints of anybody on the screen tonight. So.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Jordan, for sharing all of that with us. We'll be moving on to question number three. Those of you that are just joining us, this is the forum for the Greenbelt City Council. We have nine candidates who are holding forth on six questions. We've talked about decorum on the council. We've talked a little bit now about carbon footprints, about the environment. We move now next to accessibility of housing here in Greenbelt. You know, our next question is about that. You know, if a prospective resident is looking for a first home or a moderately priced home, or perhaps one with a higher price tag, what are the options here in Greenbelt? And how about people of a certain age looking for senior housing? What's available for them? With the Beltway Plaza site, for example, being eyed for housing development, what would be your approach to ensuring all those varied options we just listed will exist? Let's start with Ms. Weaver.
Yeah, so I think we need to continue to push developers to include a variety of housing options. For Beltway Plaza, I believe senior housing was at one point part of the developer's proposal. But then it got shifted back to being suggested as a hotel. So we need to continue to use whatever leverage we can to sway them back towards that original idea. I think having a mix of rental units and for purchase condos is another suggestion that came up in one of the public feedback sessions Beltway Plaza held. But it's, it's really going to come down to whatever power of persuasion we have, given that the city doesn't have final say on a given that the city doesn't have final say on approval of site plans and zoning. We have been able to get other concessions from developers, such as the 27,000 square feet of indoor recreation space that's to be given to the city as part of that mall redevelopment. So I think there is some hope of being persuasive, but we we just have to stay vigilant and keep pushing. And like I said, use whatever leverage and power of persuasion we can we can muster.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver. We appreciate that. Let's go back now to Mr. Orleans. Mr. Orleans, we're talking about housing accessibility here, the provision of different levels of housing, entry level up through senior living. Your thoughts, please, on how we approach?
I'm glad.
Are you still with us, sir? Mr. Orleans, we will cycle back to you. Why don't you work a bit on your on your computer, your laptop there, and we'll come back to you. Let's go now to Mr. Bird. Mr. Bird, if you would, please, give us your thoughts on ensuring varied housing options here in Greenbelt.
So so first, let me just make a distinction between aspirational comments on this and getting things done. I'll tell you, when it comes to housing, that has been a top priority of mine over the past two years, and it'll be, it'll continue to be a top priority of mine for the next two years if I'm fortunate enough to be reelected to the city council. I know, you know, a lot of times when we think of housing, we're just thinking of single family homes and the traditional. But I've I've worked very tirelessly to protect those who are renters, who are tenants. And again, very tangible, practical implications of that. Passing legislation to ban rent increases during this pandemic, passing, introducing and passing legislation to ban late fees, and also introducing and falling one vote short on an eviction war tournament. And on top of that, working collaboratively with my colleagues, but also with an extraordinary sense of urgency around the need to use the aid that we are receiving and have received from the federal government to provide more assistance when it comes to both mortgages, rental assistance, HOA fees, co-op fees, all of the above. Those have been top priorities. But going forward, really, I'm looking at senior property tax credits for senior citizens and also tying some of the attracting young homeowners in with the last question, because a lot of young homeowners are looking for electric vehicle infrastructure, looking for incentives to put solar on their roofs. I actually sponsored and passed a proposal to put so to contribute to the Raise on the Roof campaign for the co-op supermarket.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bird. We appreciate that. All those suggestions. Let's move now to Ms. Davis. Ms. Davis, the housing accessibility question.
Well, Greenbelt faces two big barriers to making sure that we have adequate and appropriate affordable housing. One, we live in a metropolitan area where the market prices are exceedingly high, rental and house. Now, if you're selling your house, that's great, but if you're trying to buy a house or rent, you're you're in serious trouble because of that. Now that people are moving out of the city into the inner and outer suburbs, the prices are just going, they're skyrocketing. Another issue is the fact that Greenbelt does not have planning and zoning authority. Now, we are lucky that we have enough clout, political clout, that the developers do come to us and we negotiate and we negotiate as best we can. But very often, we are outvoted by the district council or by the county planning board, and we take them to court, we still lose. So therefore, we do the best we can trying to get amenities and improvements in any plan. But it still means that we are short, especially in senior housing and affordable housing. Senior housing is very important right now, because a lot of our seniors in Greenbelt would love to sell their homes and move to a better place. And this would free up some of our affordable housing for the younger families to move in. So that's something that we definitely are looking forward to, and we have been doing that over the years. Thank you.
Thank you very much for sharing all that with us. We move now to Mr. Roberts. Mr. Roberts, our housing question to you.
Okay, am I unmuted?
You're 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 fine. We can hear you now.
Thank you. I appreciate it. How, you know, housing affordability, I think, is is the main issue. Because, you know, really, the only reason that I'm still living in Greenbelt is because when I turned, you know, was I, when I was in my middle twenties, I was time for me to move out of a an apartment. And I wanted to buy a home in Greenbelt. The only home that I could afford was a GHI frame home. And I love that frame home. In fact, I grew up in a frame home and I'm still living in a frame home. But it was a very affordable place, and not only is it affordable, but it's in a, you know, it provides you with a wonderful community, because it's not people on top of people. You have open space, you have a yard that you can go out and have a little garden or enjoy your trees, plant trees, you know, whatever you like to do outside. And I think that's really important for quality of life, is is being able to get outside and enjoy, you know, the outdoors and not be stuck in an apartment all the time. So in order, you know, and the big problem with that is that I think our society in general sees housing simply as a commodity. And as the older I get, the more I think that housing should not be a commodity. Housing should be a right. And in our society is not seeing that. And so right now, that's why you see, you know, people that do have money, that live in the city, that they want to get out in the city. So they're coming out to the suburbs and they are.
Thank you.
Driving the price up on everything.
We appreciate that, sir. Thank you for sharing all that with us, Mr. Roberts. Let's move on to Mr. Jordan, and we're talking about housing options, availability, accessibility. Your thoughts, sir?
Hey, thanks a lot. Thanks a lot. You know, Greenbelt, we're we're very fortunate. There's there's a great balance. We've got a wide variety of housing types, single family homes, townhouses, garden style condominiums, co-ops apartments. The the fact is, there's very little undeveloped space in Greenbelt other than around the metro station and our retail hubs like Beltway Plaza and Greenwood Center. So, you know, maintaining the housing stock that we have is really the best way for us to maintain affordability. You know, if we take care of the property that we have, the structures that we have, is is new apartments or homes are built. We still, we're actually retaining that affordable housing. So it's really, really important that we take care of what we have. But that that brings up another problem, and it's really a big problem in Greenbelt is, you know, a lot of our our condos and townhouses are aging and in the cooperative as well. So as structures age, maintenance becomes more and more expensive. So what what we're seeing is is a real, almost a crisis coming where our our condo fees and co-op fees are so high, it it makes it hard for for people to to actually continue living where they live. So it's not an easy problem to grapple with. Council just needs to spend more time and really discipline itself to grapple with these regional issues. They're not superficial gestures. Don't really make that much of a difference. Complicated problem. We need to to work on it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jordan. Ms. Pope, you're up next, and could you give us your thoughts on the housing situation?
Yes. So first, we must remember that Greenbelt does not have zoning rights. So all decisions are basically made by the county planning board. I also think it is very important and very vital to us that we maintain good working relationships with with the developers who are coming in. And so our concerns and ideas can be incorporated into the new developments. That is very important. We must work together, because we cannot say, no, you cannot do this. But I think we can gear it and we can guide it in directions, and our voices can be heard on what we need, what our needs are for our community. And our needs are subsidized housing. And I would think that the idea of having inclusionary zoning laws, like some of the surrounding counties have, would be a good idea. Inclusionary zoning law means that developers are required to set aside 12 to 15% of new homes to at below market rates and allow the public housing authority to purchase a portion of these units. And I believe that that would be very helpful. I've seen this done in other places. It works. And these units could be available for seniors, people with limited income and families. I also hope that one of the, one of the developers did listen to us, and I truly look forward to seeing a age restricted apartments coming up soon, hopefully.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. And we go now to Mr. Enzio. Mr. Enzio, would you share, please, your ideas on the housing situation here in Greenbelt?
Yes, sir. While working on the advisory planning board, I learned a lot about the new developments. And currently, there's a lot of new developments. And one thing I have noticed and learned is that these developers, they are very willing to work with us. And I think that we need to to be open, to be forward and to be open minded and to push for what Greenbelt needs. And one thing that I have learned is with the new developments that are coming up, they're they're they're, I'm very excited to 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 work with a senior only facility, condos, and and then also for the first home time buyers. I see a lot of one bedroom and two bedroom apartments, and I know that's not appealing for most people, but always getting started like what I did. And I've seen a lot of people is the apartments is the first first step to to homeownership. And and that's one thing that in the new development, there's a lot of new development, there's a lot of one bedroom and two bedroom units. And I think that'd be great for people to move to Greenbelt, to to learn about Greenbelt and to branch out into bigger developments and or townhouses or houses. Thank you, sir.
Appreciate you sharing all that with us, Mr. Enzio. Mr. Gordon, Mr. Gordon, could you please share with us your thoughts on the housing situation here in Greenbelt?
Yes, there's been many things said, obviously, as we do know, we do not have zoning authority. That's a fight I would not give up. I continue to, I think that if I work with council, that we continue to advocate and pushing one day, Greenbelt will have that. Well, that being said, I know we talked about the Beltway Plaza redevelopment as a part of that question. And, you know, I can speak to this, because just like many members of council, I am actually advisory board. So actually, you've seen different variations of this, and obviously, I was a part of that, that same group, the four, for additional minutes that came along. Obviously, the senior housing, we would love to have had that, but we did get more gracious spaces in place. So I am probably able to stand our ground and get that and to stand with prayer to get that done for the residents. I believe too, it's about education as well. I believe that, you know, most folks want to help. Most folks want to do that. Most folks, just to understand the process, want to learn. And I think us as a city, we can continue to utilize our resource to help educate our residents about home affordability and options they can have available to them, and also utilizing our county to help us do that as well. And that's where relationships are also good, relationships that I'm glad that I do have and work with council to use their relationships. That way, we can be good deal makers and also encourage those developers to do right by our residents to make sure we have affordable housing. That's where we must have a firm hand with a soft touch. Council must have a firm hand with a soft touch. We must hold on and make sure that they are doing right by our residents and make sure they're doing right by our seniors most and foremost here in Greenbelt.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gordon. And let's cycle back to Mr. Orleans. Mr. Orleans, I understand you're having some problems with your video, but you're you're calling in. So if we can hear your thoughts, would like to hear what you have to say about housing accessibility here in Greenbelt.
I'm glad you, I am calling in. The city does not have zoning authority, but each prospective developer that wants to build here seeks the city's endorsement on any of its projects. As was pointed out recently, in the last 15 years, three housing developments have either been built or under construction. And last week, the council endorsed a fourth, previously alluded to senior directed condos at the old nursing home site. The city has never pressed as it could have the developers to include an affordable element in any of these projects. Specifically, the nursing home site, their price point is from the low mid, low to mid 300,000. That's not an affordable affordable price for a two bedroom apartment. Yet the city endorsed it. The city council endorsed it. The city council has to have more resolve in the future when it's negotiating dealing with developers. And while the the city does not have zoning authority, again, if this municipality was mobilized with other municipalities, Greenbelt would have more effect when it goes to Marlboro to testify before the county planning board.
Thank you very much, Mr. Orleans. We're glad you were able to make that connection and join us. And candidates, we are at the halfway point of our forum here tonight. We'll have three more questions. And I think I'm speaking for everyone out there who's watching. I appreciate your adherence to our time cues. I appreciate your stamina and I appreciate your eloquence. So let's keep it up in the second half and continue to give our voters a very good look at what all of you stand for as we approach this next election. Let's go to question number four. Our next question is one that currently has national attention. The country is crumbling and often inadequate infrastructure. We all know the Greenbelt continues to grow and strain at the seams with our local schools at or above 115% capacity and new housing projects underway like Greenbelt Station and that new apartment complex near the federal courthouse. The need is there for our infrastructure to keep pace with that new housing and consequently, more school age youngsters. The question, how can you and the council influence planning for our anticipated infrastructural needs and ultimately reduce overcrowding in our schools? First up to answer that question is Mr. Jordan. Mr. Jordan, if you if you could join us, please, and talk about infrastructure and overcrowded schools and planning here in the in the community.
Thank you. That's a very broad question. So as far as the infrastructure goes, you know, 1937, the Greenbelt legacy, we we've got more buildings and more infrastructure than most other municipalities our size, which means, you know, the burden or the responsibility for taking care of that is is greater than for most other municipalities our size. You know, we've, council has has actually done an assessment to actually look at our capital needs going forward, and that's that's a high priority. If you kind of look at where we are and where we're going to be down the line in terms of maintenance on infrastructure, it's it's starting. So it's something that we need to prepare for by having more reserves. A question of education, you know, we don't really, we don't control the schools. The county controls the schools. So I I think the way that the city has influence is is through the relationships, encouraging better relationships and maintaining the ones that we have with the principals, the PTA's, the school board and the school administration. You know, we we have an advisory committee on education and they're very, very effective. So we we're sort of left through advocacy, but we do have good relationships with the schools. When new developments are built, we need to find a way to hold developers responsible for contributing towards the schools. You know, that was a very broad question, and I really don't think that 90 seconds is is enough time to really adequately address the full scope of the question that you asked, but I appreciate it. Love to talk to you more about it.
Very good. All right, let's move on to Ms. Pope. And Ms. Pope, we're talking about influence, what the council's influence could be, might be when it comes to infrastructure and somehow reducing the overcrowding in our schools.
Right. So I am very concerned about our schools being overcrowded. I work myself at Spring Hill Lake Elementary School, which we are always running on overload. The schools are being over capacity, especially when the new housing developed projects have yet to be built. I I for one will continue to ask for our aging Spring Hill Lake Elementary School to be replaced by a bigger and new school. We are always operating with overcrowded classrooms. That is, that's nothing new. The time is now to replace the school. I believe that in most instances, students should go to schools in their neighborhood for convenience, safety and building a sense of community. I will be fighting county level efforts to relocate Greenbelt children to other schools outside of Greenbelt, especially when those efforts are being led by architecture and urban planning firms from New York City. So I think it's very important for our students to go to their neighborhood schools. That is, that is a given. There has to be a solution that developers who come in and build apartments or condos or whatever it may be, that they have to contribute to our schools more. And I would say they should contribute to the local schools, especially if you come into our community and not just to to the county, and then they use the money as they say fit at at some other place. I think the money should stay here. The developer has to put something in that pot for schools, for local schools. So our students in Greenbelt can go to Greenbelt schools.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pope. Let's talk to Mr. Enzio. And Mr. Enzio, again, council's influence. And Mr. Enzio, again, council's influence on infrastructure and perhaps trying to reduce overcrowding in schools?
Yes, sir. One thing that I've noticed is when I moved to Greenbelt, I went to Greenbelt Elementary School. And now I have four children. And one thing that I've noticed, and Magnolli is an excellent, is an excellent school. But one thing that I loved about Greenbelt and I cherished was Greenbelt Elementary School. And it said that my kids don't go to school in the city that they live in. So my long-term goal would be on council is to work with the school board and work with the county and having the county build a new elementary school in Greenbelt. That is one of my long-term goals in Greenbelt. And one thing I've learned about anything in Greenbelt, everything is a long-term goal. So that is one of my long-term goals. The second thing with infrastructure I've noticed is that our fire department, we need a new fire department house. One thing, another long-term goal of mine is for the fire departments to have a new facility in Greenbelt, something that's state-of-the-art. And I know that we, we're going to need help with the county and we should. And this is something that they need. And this is something that I would push and I would work with council moving forward. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your thoughts, Mr. Enzio. We move now to Mr. Gordon. Mr. Gordon, your thoughts, please?
Thank you, Mrs. Aaron. So I think it boils down to relationships. I myself, when it comes to schools, I believe that, that is tantamount to the future of the city. Now, obviously, we have developments that are coming in. We have growth in our city, but I think we also need to slow, not stop, but slow development until we get our school situation under wraps. Because the more we move people in, obviously, we bring kids, and we're going to have more overcrowding. And that's why we need relationships, because that's why I'm proud that this campaign is supported by four members of our school board. So I feel like I bring those relationships to the council, that way we can help grow and build those relationships. Because even though we do not have the control of our schools, but it's our job is to advocate. Our job is to go before the actual county and say, hey, this is what our residents need. Again, a firm hand with a soft touch. Even when it comes to those who are above us in the county, we can still go before them and advocate for our residents. So I believe those relationships are a big key to that. That way, we can have the new facilities for our students, have the resources for our teachers to do their jobs the best of their ability. And that's educating the young minds, the future of the city, to make sure that we do not have to move any students outside of city lines. They can stay here, get teenagers, go to Greenbelt schools, because that's going to happen. The more we expand and grow, because it's going to happen, you're going to have no way to go. So we want to keep our students here in Greenbelt. I believe relationships are the key. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those thoughts, Mr. Gordon. We move now to Ms. Weaver. Ms. Weaver, we're talking about infrastructure and schools and overcrowding. Would you weigh in for us, please?
Or, yeah, no, I think, I think in this, our only recourse really is to make the case to the, the Board of Education to plan ahead, you know, for these new developments that are coming and the new population that is coming with them. I think it's actually one of the most challenging things about a city like Greenbelt, which is part of this really complicated network of jurisdictions, because it does have to depend on relationships and working with other people, because we don't get to decide things. We can influence things, but we don't have the final say on a lot of things. So it really does become a very difficult issue, which is not a very satisfying answer. And I know I feel for the educators like Ms. Pope. I was in, in my previous life, I was a middle school science teacher before my current job. And my last year of teaching, I do remember trying to fit 35, 35 eighth graders in a science classroom and trying to find, you know, comfortable room for them, let alone doing hands-on lab activities. So it is really a challenging issue. I, I will say, though, that while we may not be able to directly influence the schools, I think part of the other question that was, that we were sent, had to do with things that we actually do have a little bit more control over, things like some of the after-school programming, things that we can support, and some of the, the summer activities and, and after-school programming that the Recreation Department already does an excellent job of, but maybe there are some more things that we can help with in that. And there are some, I know some city recognition groups that have done mentoring and other things, continuing to sort, support some of those out-of-school activities that we do really have more control over, even if we can't, can't force them to build us a new school.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver. Thank you. Mr. Bird, your thoughts on how the council can influence infrastructure projects, school buildings, overcrowding? Floor is yours.
So as was acknowledged earlier, it's a lot to pack into one question. But I'm going to try my best. You know, one of the most recent things that I did, because again, I want to, some of the conversation is aspirational, but I want to connect the aspirational to what has already been done as well. I, I, I'm so grateful that we were able to work with outgoing council member Lita Mack when I first got on the city council to allow Greenbelt Station residents, children to go to Greenbelt Elementary before they were going to another school, and that was putting them on the track not to end up at Eleanor Roosevelt High. So that is one big thing. But one of the consequences, of course, is that further contributed to overcrowding at that school. Now, council member Pope made an important point that even at Spring Hill Lake Elementary, there's also that issue. So I do think what Mr. Gordon said earlier, relationships are important. I'm also supported by four members of the school board. I'm also supported by the current chair of the House Ways and Means Education Subcommittee Delegate Alliance to Washington. And that is somebody with whom I've worked on infrastructure issues, including the Greenbelt Road issues. You know, there's several issues on that road, and I don't need to get into all of them right here. I agree that, you know, we need to have that firehouse. We need to get the armory for the firehouse. But we also were able to work over the past couple of years to save Robert Goddard, because Greenbelt students were going to be pushed out of Robert Goddard. And so that's another thing we did to try to address school capacity issues at a school just outside of Greenbelt that a lot of Greenbelters go to.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bird. Let's go now to Mr. Orleans. Mr. Orleans, I know you joined us by phone before. Are you still there, sir? Mr. Orleans?
Eric, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, sir. Yes, we're talking about infrastructure and the council's influence on infrastructure and on school construction and trying to reduce overcrowding in schools. Your thoughts, sir?
I got you. As has been pointed out, Greenbelt does not control the schools within its jurisdiction. Greenbelt has had relationships in the past, our city council, with the county council. And it's had relationships in the past with the county executive, the previous county executive of which was elected on a promise to have an all-elected school board. And within two years, reneged on that promise and got the state legislature to enable a hybrid school board, controlled effectively by the executive. We obviously don't, don't control the county council, but the county, our Greenbelt City Council has had relationships with Todd Turner and Ingrid Turner before him. And for many years, the county council, when sitting as district council, when it approves new development, does so waiving the adequate public facility fees, public safety, and also schools. We really have to, we need the people, the residents of Greenbelt and the residents of the county really have to overcome this disconnect between the people we elect and what they say they're going to do and what in reality they do do. Again, Greenbelt, with other municipalities in Prince George's County through the PECMA, should make it clear to the county council and make it clear to the county executive and make it clear to the school board that we, with any new development, comes the responsibility for providing for adequate.
Thank you, Mr. Orleans, for your thoughts on that. And we will check back with you again on question number five. Let's now go to Ms. Davis. Ms. Davis, your thoughts on this?
Overcrowding in our schools is not just a Greenbelt problem. All of northern Prince George's County has overcrowding. We do have two parcels of land that are set aside for new schools. They're all in Greenbelt East, however. One of them could be a new middle school, which could help the overcrowding with Greenbelt Middle School. But generally speaking, the, the fact is that we have very little space to put schools where they are most needed. The Eleanor Roosevelt High School is overcrowded because everybody wants to go to Eleanor Roosevelt High School. It's an excellent school. So that is something where we can certainly advocate for the expansion of Eleanor Roosevelt High School, which was planned several years ago, but has been put on hold. We do need better relationships with our school board. Right now, they've got their issues. We definitely need to advocate for a new Spring Hill Lake Elementary School. That is by far, should have been done many years ago. We should keep our Greenbelt students in Greenbelt if they wish, but it does mean that we're going to have to provide a lot of other services, perhaps after school, as we do with our Recreation Department and a lot of other organizations. As far as other infrastructure, we not only have brick-and-mortar infrastructure that we need to maintain, and we are doing the best we can with that. It's the green infrastructure that we also need to make sure that we are helping parks, playgrounds, our forests, because that's just as important as a brick-and-mortar.
Thank you for all of those thoughts, Ms. Davis. And Mr. Roberts, you get the last word.
Thank you. I appreciate it. You know, everyone on the, all of my colleagues on the council like to complain that we don't have our planning, own planning and zoning authority. And that's because none of them are willing to fight to get that authority. There's a little town up in Montgomery County called Washington Grove. It's a fraction on the size of Greenbelt. They have their own planning and zoning authority. I voted against the massive 2,500 apartment complex at Beltway Plaza, mostly because there's not going to be a school provided with that development. And not only is it going to overburden our schools, but it's going to overwhelm all of the services that we have. Our recreation, the 2,700 square feet of recreation space they offered is a joke. That, that's not going to come anywhere close to what we need for a development that size. So in, in my opinion, we need to fight to have our own planning and zoning authority, because we're being discriminated against. Prince George's County is the only county in the state and pretty much in the country where municipalities do not have their own planning and zoning authority. And we need to fight to get that, even if we need to go to court to get it. And I think if we do mount a fight and we do go to court, we can, we can do that. We can get our own planning and zoning authority. But you have to have a city council that's willing to take on that fight. And right now, I don't see that happening.
Thank you very much, sir. As we end a discussion of question number four, we're about to move on to question number five. Thank you. A shout out to our interpreters for doing such a wonderful job thus far. Please keep it up. We do appreciate all that you're doing here. Let's go on to question five, candidates. Let's move next to finances and economic development. Greenbelt's major shopping centers and indeed, the entire business community have all been impacted by the pandemic. Our question is, how do we address the rise in office vacancies? How do we lure back businesses that have closed? And how do we create an environment where new businesses want to set up shop? How do we do all those things? Let's hear from Mr. Bird first.
Well, thank you very much. You know, this is, this is a complicated issue. It, it, it requires a long-range solution. One of the things that I'll push for is the, and, and I've done this alongside, and I'll give credit to a council member Pope, who has long pushed for this, and that is the establishment of an Economic Development Advisory Committee. We have a number of citizen advisory committees that are, that, that review development proposals that come in. I think we also need a citizen advisory committee that is proactive about dealing with the economic development challenges facing our existing business community and facing those businesses who's, who might ultimately consider relocating to Greenbelt or doing business in Greenbelt for the first time. And so I think that, that is a big thing. Working closely with our business community through the forthcoming Business Alliance will be important. But short of that, again, always trying to make sure we not just talk about the aspirational, but talk about what has already been done. We have, you know, I, I, I put forward a proposal and I introduced and together with my colleagues passed the first tranche of funding to assist a lot of our businesses that had been impacted, devastated by this pandemic, as you mentioned earlier. That's a lot of small businesses, like the New Deal Cafe, like a number of other businesses. We need to do more of that. We need to expand upon that. We need to do that without delay. I have that sense of urgency. I have a commitment to making sure our business community thrives. And, and, and that is critically important. We also need to clean up our shopping centers like Greenway Shopping Center, enforce the code, because they're breaking the code too often.
Thank you, Mr. Bird. Thank you very much for all of that. Appreciate all of those thoughts. Let's move next to Mr. Enzio. Mr. Enzio, we're talking about a business plan. How do we lure businesses here to Greenbelt? Get people to come back who might have gone?
Yes, sir. I think the number one thing, I've, I've always noticed that a lot of people in Greenbelt and, and a lot of council members, they, we are part of a lot of different committees and groups. One thing that I would push for is to be a part of the Prince George's County Chambers of Commerce. The reason why I say that is because it doesn't matter how many studies you do or how many estimates you do, you need to hear from the businesses. And I would go to the committees, hear from the businesses firsthand, hear exactly what their struggles are, hear exactly what their problems are, and then listen to their advice for us to come up with a positive solution. And there are plenty different committees in that chamber. There's a finance, there's a environmental, there's a lot of, and these are successful business owners. I think that if, if, if we ever want to become pro-business in Greenbelt, we need to listen to the actual business owners. And joining this commerce is, is the, the right step and to really listen to these business owners. And then they will help us really get us to listen to their problems. And we can actually come together as a group and come up with solutions based on their problems and their advice. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Enzio, for sharing your thoughts. Let's now go to Ms. Davis. Ms. Davis, could you weigh in, please?
Sure. It's taken us a while as a council to realize that, yes, we take care of our residents, we take care of our youth, our seniors, but somehow we've forgotten to deal with our businesses. We finally did go ahead and develop an Economic Development Department. We have one person who is doing a phenomenal job of working with our businesses, informing them of the financial assistance. And, and we have our business coffees where we do get a chance to talk with our small businesses mostly. But what we probably need to do very soon is to expand that department. We are going to add an intern to help her out, but I think we probably have to have some part-time or even full-time employees in the future. The Business Alliance idea is a great idea, because that's like a Greenbelt Chamber of Commerce. And right now, there's little mini commerces over at Beltway Plaza and Roosevelt Center, but they all need to get together to work together. Marketing would be something that we could also do as a city with our IT department and public relations. Many cities produce videos that they put out in various ways through social media that kind of talked about the attractiveness of the city to bring business in. And most importantly, we need to talk with our current businesses to make sure whatever they need, we give them assistance so that they stay here in Greenbelt. The small businesses and the nonprofits or the small groups of people that work together, we need to keep them as well.
Thank you very much, Ms. Davis. Let's go to Ms. Pope. Talking business plans and hope for businesses here in Greenbelt. Would you please share your thoughts? Did you unmute yourself there?
I'm so sorry. I had a, there was a computer glitch.
That's all right. Did you need me to repeat anything for you?
No, no, I'm good. Thank you very much. I'm so sorry. The Greenbelt City Council needs to support and monitor the progress of our economic development. We have multiple high-end office parks that are situated in key geographic positions along convenient major roadways among a variety of government and academic organizations, including but not limited to NASA, Bark, and the University of Maryland. We need to capitalize on these prime office locations by aggressively courting potential federal, state, and county clients and openly communicate with building management. Ms. Liggins, our Economic Development Coordinator, could be the liaison between these building developments and the city. We may need to expand the Economic Development Department of the city, as this is more than a one-person job. I also have been advocating for an Economic Development Advisory Board, whose focus would be to look at ways to connect prospective businesses to our city and encourage entrepreneurship to help fill empty business spaces. And of course, we always have to foster our existing businesses throughout the city. And I think Ms. Liggins has done a really good job, especially during these terrible times during COVID. She has done a lot of outreach. She has, and we finally have a inventory of businesses which we, we didn't have before. We really didn't know who was in the city, what businesses do we have, and we're getting there slowly but surely. But we really do have to foster, reach out to businesses, talk to them, but also be aggressively pursuing some of the major players.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pope, for sharing all that with us. Let's go to Mr. Orleans. Mr. Orleans, we're talking about the needs of the business community and what we can do to help. If you're still there, sir, can you share your thoughts with us?
I'm here. In any discussion of economic development, it should always be asked, in whose interest are we developing our economy? The ownership of Greenway Center's interests are not Greenbelt residents' interests. If so, when it was first suggested to Greenway Center's owners ten or twelve years ago, that they allow for a bus stop internal to their property or at least a connection, a pedestrian connection internal to their property rather than that law which exists, which in winter is inaccessible. They would have agreed, but they wouldn't even agree to that. Their interests are not Greenbelt's interests. If a quantum interests were related more to Greenbelt's interests, they would be, had been more forthcoming much earlier in agreeing to redevelop its property in, with an inclusion of an affordable housing element. It chose not to do so. If their interests were Greenbelt's interests, they would have suffered their economic loss without coming to the taxpayers of Greenbelt through the city council to get reimbursed for their failed business model to the tune of several hundred thousands of dollars over several years. Roosevelt Center's interests certainly are Greenbelt's interests, but Mr. Christakis's interests are not Greenbelt's interests. Council has never been willing to hold Mr. Christakis accountable for the shoddy condition that.
Thank you very much for sharing that with us. Mr. Roberts, your thoughts, please?
Thank you. I appreciate it. Well, for twenty-two years, I've been a part of that business community. I've been self-employed, self-employed business owner for twenty-two years now, and it's been a struggle. But the one thing I know is that most businesses, they want to go to communities that are good communities. That's the most important thing, that you have a stable housing, that you have a beautiful city makes a big difference, that you have, you know, low crime in your, in your community. All those kinds of things that are our job to do is what we need to do. We need to allow the business people to do their job and we need to do our job and make sure that our city is a livable, beautiful city that people want to come to. That's my biggest, that's my opinion and I, you know. I've got twenty-two years' experience to know how hard it is to be in business. And so, you know, I can, I can work with people in business and, and I can work with the city to make sure that our city stays a beautiful and a livable city. And that's the most important thing, I believe.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. We return now to Mr. Gordon as we talk about the, the business community here. Sir, your thoughts?
Yes, sir. So first, I just want to agree with the significance. As long as it's doing a fantastic job, obviously, with, with, with the rough times we've been in, she's in a great job of working with our businesses. I will say that we need to highlight, situate the, the such a positive. Greenbelt is such a unique city. And I think we need to have a robust marketing campaign by utilizing not just our business development department along with Dreamax Television, which I'm so, I'm glad I get a chance to serve as the Vice President of Gate because we're always serving for content. There's so much content that can be used with using marketing to bring it out there and also using those relationships again on the county level to actually bring the access television in, again, to show folks that Greenbelt, you can live here, you can work here, you can play here. And just a kind of matter tagline, that you can come into our city and you can live here and enjoy all the, the things and all the amenities that we have here and still get that hometown feel. So I think a marketing campaign, robust marketing campaign, along with our businesses, working with our business development department as well as that robust through social media, because as you know, I'm a huge social media guy, so social media will be a big part of that. And again, I do like the, the, the actual things for us to ask, which is a great idea, use social media ads, having paid ads for businesses as well. That way, that's more economics going into the city. So someone wants to like, hey, I want to pay for this ad through, you know, through this, through, through this organization. We say, hey, we can use this, we use this for our city. But I do believe that marketing is the best way to go with this.
Thank you for all those suggestions, Mr. Gordon. And let's move now to Mr. Jordan. Mr. Jordan, your thoughts on what we can do for the business community here in Greenbelt?
Thank you. Thank you. We, we, we need to build better relationships with our business community. Council too often in the past has sort of taken an adversarial stance with our business community when they come before council. When the question comes up, whose interest is, is the business community? It's everyone's interest because to the extent that our business community thrives, that, that means that we will not have to rely on personal property taxes, personal taxes as much. So we, we need the business community. We're all in this together. You know, our office vacancy rate remains high. It's a regional problem throughout the Washington DC area. Close to eight years ago, you know, I led council to commission a study from Anabank Basu, one of the leading economists in the state of Maryland. And he specifically made some recommendations about our office vacancy rate. He suggested that we needed to develop incentives to help, help them redevelop. Our offices are becoming older, our office complexes throughout the city. And there's a lot of competition, you know, the nature of work is changing. So, you know, that maybe a lot of companies and organizations will not need as much office space. So we need to be proactive about this. And relationships with the business community is something I've been committed to my entire time on council. You know, I shepherded, I initiated those business coffees that we have. I shepherded in the hiring of our economic development staff. So we need to keep our eye on the ball because, you know, residential and business community can't separate. You can't have one without the other. We really need to focus on the business community and have a better relationship so we can work together.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. And Ms. Weaver, you get the last word on this topic.
Yeah, it's hard to go last because a lot of the things I, I, I had thoughts on are similar, but I guess maybe that's a good sign that whichever seven of us are elected to council, there's, there, there are clearly some things we agree on. What I was going to say is I think one of the ways to, to build the, the, is to build relationships with prospective businesses so they feel they have a partner, partnership with us towards mutual goals. A key mover of that, as has been mentioned, is the, the Economic Development Coordinator in her office. But I do think it's worth thinking about that thoughtful and focused development may mean trying to attract businesses that fill and unfilled niche and especially those that support the cooperative and environmental ethos of the city. I think the, the recent example of the, the, the shared office space that's being, that's being renovated in Roosevelt Center is an excellent example of that. And I think also in specific instances, the city may be able to serve as a bridge between the business and, and the county or state resources and requirements. For example, facilitating events for food trucks or other pop-up businesses. And I think this has also been mentioned, we should talk to the people who have businesses in Greenbelt about why they came and stayed, as well as, I think, just as importantly, those who considered coming to Greenbelt but didn't because they're going to be best able to tell us about the barriers and problems they faced and why they chose to locate their business elsewhere. So I think getting more information from the people who, who, who can tell us what to do better is really important.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver. Before we have all of you return with your final statements, we have one final question for you to can't, for you to answer. We end with an equity question that has been much in the news and one that all voters will see on the ballot. Referendum question asks if the City Council of Greenbelt should establish a twenty-one-member council to review, discuss and make recommendations related to local reparations for African-American and Native American residents of Greenbelt. Voters will be asked to indicate yes or no to establish the commission. So our last question, we are asking each council candidate, what is your position on the referendum question regarding reparations? And we'll start with Mr. Inzio, please.
Yes, sir. One thing that I've realized is that I've noticed door knocking, that there's a lot of pain. I noticed that. And, and there's a lot of conflicting. And one thing, one thing that I, one thing that I'm concerned about this referendum is that it is very decisive. One thing that I've learned watching the meetings is that the council is, is this extremely divided when it comes to this issue. So one thing that I, that I, that I, that I am open to is I'm open to learning. I think that's the most important thing. I'm open to, to listening and I'm, and I'm, and I think that's the most important thing. I'm, I'm open also to, to listen to the vote and, and, and hearing the voices from the, from the city. And I think, and then also hearing from all the council members. And I think that's the most important thing before making a decision reference like this. I also, I also know that there's a lot of pain and, and I think the importance is, is learning from the history and moving forward and making Greenbelt better in the future. Thank you.
We appreciate you weighing in. Thank you, sir. Mr. Jordan, please.
Yeah, thank you very much. You know, I, I recognize and appreciate the case for reparations. That's, that's why I did support putting on the ballot, listen to the people on this. Personally, I'm more supportive of a broader equity and inclusion task force so we can have these conversations and other conversations around equity and inclusion. And I did bring that up. You know, Greenbelt was founded in nineteen thirty-seven and owned and operated by the federal government up until the mid-fifties when GHI was formed. So I, I think when you talk about reparations, I think the focus needs to be on Prince George's County, the federal government and the state. So that's, that's how I feel about it. I'm going to listen to the people. I did support putting it on the ballot, but I, I think we need to have a broader conversation.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bird, your ideas?
Yes, I support the, and I, and I voted yes on, well, I will be voting yes on it. And, and, and let me just say, I also will listen to the people. You know, if there's strong opposition to this, I'll, I'll take that into consideration. But I support this because regardless, the reality is there, there is a case to be made for it. Not just at the federal level, not just at the state level, not just at the county level, but right here in Greenbelt. You know, unfortunately, our, our city is not immune to the unfortunate disease of, of green, I'm sorry, of, of racism. And, and it, and in part, it has some of the vestiges of Jim Crow when you think about geographical segregation that we've seen, you know, in different parts of the city. I mean, that's just, that's just a fact, right? And so I support it. And I also wanted to say that the answer to this question is important because of the, the commission is voted favorably upon by the voters in this referendum, the people of Greenbelt and particularly those who might be impacted by this question. Many of our residents who are residents of color, African-Americans and particularly Native Americans, they're really going to have to ask themselves, is, are the people who ultimately, when, are they going to take very seriously that outcome? And are they going to implement an act of pointing? And then as far as diversity and equity, I, I propose funding for a directive of diversity, equity, inclusion for the budget that was rejected by several of the members of it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bird. Thank you. Ms. Davis, your thoughts?
Well, I voted to put the question before our voters and our residents, and that is because I want to hear what they have to think. We certainly heard a lot from individuals, but now we need to hear from the entire city. And I'm willing to abide by the results of that referendum, no matter which way it goes. However, if the question fails to reach a majority vote, I will continue my efforts to eliminate disparities and inequities in city services and policies as I've always done throughout my twenty-eight years on council. There are many times that it's, sometimes it's an education process. Someone needs to tell us what the problem is. And then we realize, you know, we need to see all sides of the issue. And that included, for instance, our Festival of Lights that we always thought was the way we should be done. However, people said, no, it's not the way it should be done. There are many, many diverse, diverse religions in our city and different viewpoints. So a couple of years ago, the Community Relations Advisory Board and the Recreation Department changed things around. And now it's come back again because our, our population has become even more diverse. And so we need to welcome all ideas and all traditions and viewpoints. It strengthens our community and makes it much more enjoyable to learn about other people in the way that they handle their holidays, their food, just the way that they deal with each other. Culture is a great thing.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Davis. Let's go now to Ms. Weaver, please. We're talking about the referendum question.
Yes, thank you. I think it's past time for this type of conversation as our society is coming to a cultural reckoning about the darker aspects of American history. It's a national issue, but also does have specific implications in Greenbelt because of our own local history of exclusion in the early days of the city. And the concept of reparations is not just about monetary compensation, although that may be part of it. It's also about acknowledging the misdeeds of the past and accepting responsibility for them in a restorative justice sense. And for those, especially my fellow white folks who try to say things like, I wasn't there, I wasn't even alive yet, why is it up to me to address this and potentially have to pay for reparations? Yes, it would have been better if the inequalities had been addressed by previous generations or better yet, not perpetrated in the first place. But until someone invents a time machine, the only time we have to work with is now. And it's time to stop kicking the can down the road to future generations and start dealing with it. Because even if I wasn't there, I am benefiting from the circumstances created by injustices done to others. And so I will be voting in favor of the referendum and look forward to hearing what the rest of the community has to say about it.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver. Mr. Orleans, you are our next panelist. Would you tell us your thoughts, please?
Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are.
I support the question. I will be voting for it. I am urging others to vote for it. I do think, however, that a twenty-one-member commission is an unfortunate element of the question. I think council, along with such in the community as Gila, the faith community, the business community, if they really have the interest of Greenbelt at heart, we should all be engaged in this question on a continuing basis. How to overcome the errors of our collective past is something that we all should be involved with. However, I will be voting yes on the question.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gordon, your thoughts, please?
Thank you so much, Mrs. Anne. The thing about learning in your past and looking back, you know, seeing all the great things that were accomplished, but sometimes you look back and you see things that should not have happened. And you learn from those things. You build upon those things to grow for the future. I support reparations as far as a measure of having the conversation. I voted early, so I did vote for it. I put that out there right now. Because I believe the conversation is necessary. It needs to be had, and I'm going to accept whatever comes back from that committee, no matter which way it goes, but the conversation needs to be had. For example, I'll use a quick story. I had a bully once in school, always beat me up. And I was telling my grandmother, if you have that conversation, say, you know what? This is why you are hurting me and this is what it is doing to me. They can understand. You can learn from each other, learn from the pain and the hurt that was caused. That way, it's not replicated again. And you can build upon that, upon a common ground. And that's what conversation does, to get in the room and say, hey, this is what I went through. And you can understand. Because people can say one thing, but you have to listen and be open to listen to the pain and hurt. That's how you build upon a common ground. So that being said, I support the conversation as a whole because it is needed now.
Appreciate that, Mr. Gordon. Mr. Roberts, it's time for your sake.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I assume you can hear me now.
Yes, yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Well, you know, it's my opinion that we're doing this backwards. And we're doing it backwards because unfortunately, four of my colleagues refused to vote on the first, on doing it right. It is the first time in the history of the city council that four people have refused to vote on an issue. And that's a violation of our, our rules. But what we should have done is we should have had the commission so that we can have a conversation because the conversation is the most important part of this. So we should have had the commission and then they should have come out with some recommendations. And then maybe we should have considered having a referendum. If we didn't like the recommendations and there's controversy, then we should have had the referendum and allow, allow the people to have their say, should there be any kind of reparations or not. Instead, we're doing it backwards. You know, we're telling people to vote to have essentially a committee or a commission. That's, you know, that's not really giving the citizens any say in the issue. That's, you know, that's not really giving the citizens any say in the issue. And they should have a say in the issue. So that's where I stand. We're doing it backwards, but we're gonna have to go that way. We're gonna have to, you know, vote on this. And I'm sure we're gonna, we'll probably will have the commission, and then we need to have that conversation. Because like I said, the conversation is the most important thing because our country is is fraught with all kinds of bad things that no one wants to talk about.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much for sharing all that with us, Mr. Roberts. And the last word on the referendum question goes to you, Ms. Pope.
Thank you. Unfortunately, Greenbelt did not originally allow black people to become residents when the town was built in 1937. I do strongly support the historical awareness of this racism that occurred over 80 years ago, so that it will never happen again, and especially not here in our city. However, I don't think it's with the scope of our city government to address and solve any national or state level issues of systemic racism, segregation, and discrimination. When Greenbelt was built in 1937, the land was owned by the federal government. And I strongly believe that if anyone should research and spearhead this issue, it should be the federal government and not our current Greenbelt residents. We are a small municipality of about 23,000 residents. The city's income comes from property taxes that our residents and property owners pay. I don't think we simply do not have the financial means or the manpower to do the in-depth research that is necessary to thoroughly investigate this injustice. I am not saying yes, I'm not saying no, but I think that that is, we were getting ahead of ourselves, and maybe we are doing this backwards. And I think this question, we could have had this committee and not put it on the referendum. We should just vote on it. But of course, if the committee is formed, I am, I am optimistic, and I'm sure I'm going to work with the committee and listen, and of course, work with everyone involved.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pope. All of you watching now know an awful lot more about our candidates running for city council that responded to the questions, many of which probably are on your mind as well. It is now time for them to present their final thoughts, whatever they would like to say. And each one of our candidates will get one minute to wrap up on this evening of enlightenment and education. Let's start with closing remarks. One minute from Ms. Weaver, please.
Well, I want to thank all of the folks who organized this event for giving us all the opportunity to to speak to the community. I I think it's really important to be able to to know what your potential elected officials think about different issues. I I'm sorry, I wish it could have been more of a conversation. I think that's, that's what would be. It was, it was us talking at you. And so what I would 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 encourage all of the Greenbelt voters listening is to to reach out for more conversation and a little bit more back and forth. Watch the News Review this week for for information about a meet and greet with me on Saturday. But mostly, I just thank everybody for for staying tuned in on this Tuesday evening and for for being engaged in your in your civic life and and please vote on November 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver, for joining us this evening. Mr. Jordan, your one minute summation, please, sir.
Hey, thank you. I've heard a lot of good ideas this evening, and I compliment my fellow candidates on their thoughts. And if I'm fortunate enough to be elected to council, look forward to working with with each of you, you know, on some of the issues raised tonight. My my service on council since 2009 provides some reasons why voters should reconsider my reelection. You know, I take pride in being prepared for meetings. I actively debate issues and frequently ask questions put forward by staff, other council members, hard questions. I strive to be respectful of differing opinions and trying to work for consensus on issues, even when I disagree. And, you know, I provide measured, practical leadership on council during my time. So a lot of the issues that I've advocated for just now taking hold, but much remains to be done. I'll just wrap it up there and say that I respectfully ask your votes, so I continue to work on your behalf. If you want more information or if you're interested in volunteering or getting involved in my campaign, just go to my website, jordanforgreenbelt.org.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Mr. Orleans, your final thoughts this evening? You have one minute, sir.
Thank you. Some folks, I think, like the status quo just fine. And I believe, without knowing just why they do so, some of us want to change it. I want to change it, especially in how we think. Why is it that we believe what it is that we believe? And can we justify it? Sincerity, I think, is the most important quality in anybody seeking elective office. I'm not going to speak in platitudes. Whatever I believe should be a different course on policy questions, the only reason that I'm standing for council is to help improve the practice of democracy in Greenbelt. I'm familiar with council. It talks too much. You should listen more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Orleans. Ms. Pope, the final thought she'd like to leave with the voters this evening?
Thank you so much. I'm ready to continue to work with all of councilmen, with all the council members that are going to be reelected or newly elected, if I'm lucky enough to be back on council. I'm ready to work collaboratively with all of my colleagues. I'll work diligently. I'm trying to bring civility back to our meetings, treat everyone with respect, listen carefully, and of course, disagree respectfully at times. I would say let's get together as a team because to get, we need to work together to get things done. Teamwork makes the dream work. That's the saying. I kindly ask for your vote during this election. You'll find my name on number seven this time on the ballot. And I certainly thank you very much for hosting this forum. And I really want you to know I'm dedicated to working for Greenbelt just as hard as I've been in the past, and I look forward to another two years, hopefully, fingers crossed.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pope, for being here with us tonight. Mr. Bird, your closing remarks?
So again, I want to emphasize that I have experience, but I also have fresh ideas, I have energy, and I have the youth that that brings about an urgency when it comes to getting things done. And that is what I've tried to spend the last two years doing. I have never missed a vote as a member of the city council. I have passed many, many pieces of legislation, many motions. I have held more town halls than any council member in city history over a two-year period. I have engaged hand in hand with constituents on constituent services. I listen, I communicate via email, I communicate via social media. But I also want to let you know that I've grown. I'm not perfect. I've made mistakes. You know, FDR said, there's nothing I love as much as a good fight. And, you know, there's some of that in me. But I've also learned the importance of collaboration, I've learned, learned the importance of relationships. But most of all, what you'll get from me is being straightforward to you and never being afraid to fight for the people of Greenbelt.
Thank you, Mr. Bird. Mr. Inzio, your turn to address the voters. Your final thoughts tonight?
Yes, sir. I just want to say thank you first. You know, I've, I've always saw myself as a Greenbelt man. I've lived here almost 30 years. My very first job was I was lifeguard at Aquatic Fitness Center, and and I've always stayed here. And I've been loyal to Greenbelt. I love Greenbelt. I raised my family here, all four of my lovely four children. I got married in Greenbelt. I stayed in Greenbelt. I believe in Greenbelt. And I just ask that when you make your seven votes, you think about me. Thank you. God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Inzio. Ms. Davis, the floor is yours.
Well, I'd like to thank Ms. Lambert and all the people who put this event together, this candidate forum. It's the only one in the whole, the whole election. Over my 28 years on council and having leadership roles on regional, state, and county levels, I have gained the experience, skills, knowledge necessary to work with my colleagues and to do what's best for Greenbelt. And over those 28 years, I have learned a lot, and sometimes I have changed, and for the better, I hope. I do not have any aspirations for higher office. I have been honored to serve the people of my hometown in as many ways as I can. And I will continue to ask the necessary questions, do the necessary research, to listen to our constituents, and to work toward productive consensus on council if I am reelected. I have been and always will be committed to community. I will appreciate your support and your vote. Thank you very, very much.
We appreciate all your comments, Ms. Davis. Mr. Roberts, your turn. One last.
Thank you.
Give your thoughts.
Well, I know it's a big ask after being on council for 30 years to ask to be reelected again. But the reason that I'm running again this year is because I have some real unfinished business. And the most important issue that I want to pursue is a new park for the people in Greenbelt West because the the children of Greenbelt West for the past four years have been cheated, they've been discriminated against because they have not got the same kind of resources that the rest of our city has. Old Greenbelt is loaded with parks and playgrounds and playing fields. Greenbelt East has its fair share of those things. People in Greenbelt West have none of that. The children over there cannot walk down the street and play, you know, a sport on a team like the kids in our side of town can. And I want to remedy that. I want to make that right. And that's a big issue. The other thing I want to do is I want to secure the armory facility for our volunteer fire department.
Thank you very much, Mr. Roberts, for for your final comments there. And, Mr. Gordon, the last candidate thoughts of the night are yours, sir.
I want to thank Ms. Lambert and her team for putting this together. Mrs. Aaron, it's always a pleasure. You definitely shaped my childhood as a student at Prince George County Public Schools in the science ball. With that being said, I just want folks to realize and understand that for me, this is almost a three decade journey of helping and serving my community. I began at the age of 10, from lessons from my grandmother about creating common grounds, creating solutions, finding answers to the problem by working with us. It's good to find common ground. When you find common ground, it helps you see the perspective of us. That way, you learn from them. And then I'm about common ground solutions and working with our city to move Greenbelt forward for the future and honoring our past and helping our seniors and educating our children and all the above. So I thank you so much for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. I thank all of you. Thank all of you who are participating tonight. Thank all of you that have tuned in. And of course, we all hope that you vote. Voting is ongoing at the moment. And here to tell you more about voting and where to do it and when you can do it is the reason I'm here tonight is because of this woman, Dina Lambert. I've likened her to Gwen Eiffel. She has the same personality and work ethic. She is indefatigable, and you want to work for her because she cares so much. And Phoebe, who is beside the behind the scenes here at Gate, she's been making me look good and sound good all night here. What a, what a talent she is at will. So I thank you all for your attention. And Dina, it's up to you now.
Oh, thank you so much, Mrs. Aaron. This, this has definitely been an event for the season. I I think, based on the comments I'm seeing on Facebook, and and I'm sure as a small town as we are, we'll be talking about this for some time. So I want to thank each one of you who attended, our candidates, who set aside time, who prepared thoughtful comments for this evening. It it takes a lot of work, and this is definitely not a sprint, but a marathon, not just until Election Day, but even afterwards, because the people that you heard from this evening, they share their passions, and it sounds as though they are in it for the long haul. So given that this is just one conversation, I want to encourage you as listeners, as residents, as neighbors, to continue the conversations within yourself, within your family, but also with the candidates. Many of them have websites, many of them have social media pages. So please reach out to them, ask them the questions, and, you know, give consideration to each of them because certainly we all know that our future depends on the leaders that we have on our council and their ability to work together and collaboration with our stakeholders in the county and state. So finally, as far as the big day, we have early voting. Our last chance for early voting is this coming Saturday and Sunday at the Spring Hill Lake Recreation Center. I believe it's 9:00 AM until 11:00. But please check the Greenbelt website for more information on Saturday and Sunday early voting. Then we have our big day on November the 2nd. Please give thoughtful consideration to all of the elements that are on the ballot. Please, if you have any kind of feedback for this forum, please follow up with me at vicepresident@ghi.coop, C-O-O-P, and I'll be happy to respond as I'm able to. I really want to take a moment to thank Mr. Dave Zarin, who was our wonderful moderator for this evening, our timekeeper, Mr. Ben Wilhelm. He's definitely kept us on track. Also, our interpreters, Steve and Laura, who have provided access for deaf and hard of hearing community, as well as the team. They have been behind the scenes with me, giving me wisdom, guidance, thoughtfulness. That includes Phoebe McFarb from Gate, Dr. Lois Rosado from Charleston Village Condominiums, Bob Zugby, and Ben Wilhelm, and Conrad Hurling. If I'm missing anyone, please, that's into my heart. But I want to thank you so much for this evening, and have a good night.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Ms. Lambert, and next week.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you. Good night.
Bye bye.
Good night. Please.